I was ready to pray.
I know, you were all set. I saw your hand starting to go up.
Sorry.
All right, all right.
Very good.
Might have to hit this thing?
No, you should be good.
Okay.
It's all set. It is seven o'clock.
Seven tonight.
Yeah, we're live.
Let's do it.
Oh, we're live already?
Yep.
Oh, who waved?
I did.
Oh. You stole my thunder. Okay. All right, good evening. Hello, this is going to be our Monday, June 30th, meeting of the Select Board. Here tonight, we have our clerk, Ellen Rosenfeld, our vice chair, Craig Schultz. I'm Erin Underhill, the chair. We have Mike Gazinski and Karen Bray DeMarzo, our town administrator and assistant town administrator. Do we, we have some announcements first? Do we have a middle high school announcement?
We do, actually. Do you want to recap?
Yeah, there was a community open house last, two weeks ago. And it was a pretty well attended, that a lot of information came out. Biggest point they were making, they, they are still doing value engineering, looking at efficiencies. A lot of the issues that came up were, one of the efficiencies they found is the gym was 15 feet wider than it needs to be. Right now, we seat about 400 people. The new gym will seat 720 something. And it was 15 feet wider than that. It was set over 1,200 people on the other side. So they can get it to a reasonably high number of people in the gym and they can up by reasonably high 300 more than they have now. And they'll save about a million bucks on the project.
Yeah, that's because, that's because the MSBA, right, won't, it was a little bit too big.
It was, it was a little too big, so we reduced it to the minimum size, the MS, maximum size, the MSBA would fund.
Right.
And then also knocking 15 feet off of a gym widthwise, you know, over the entire run of the gym, is a few hundred, $300 per square foot.
Yeah.
So that knocked about a million dollars of cost off and the gym will be completely reimbursable now, which is another big win.
Yeah.
So, and it, and it adds 300 more seats to our existing gym. So there's really no loss to it at all. 1,200 seats was probably too.
That was, yeah.
That was a nice gym.
Yeah, and which just goes to show that this firm that we hired is really sharpening their pencil every time they meet.
Yeah.
Which is terrific.
And we are heading towards the point where we'll have cost analysis. We're not going to produce a cost until we have the final, uh, cost per taxpayer, until we have a final cost for the building and a reimbursement rate, which will probably occur sometime in September, early September. And then we'll have all the costs broken down, the final numbers prepared and, and explain all that.
Yep.
And Ellen?
I only have, yeah, I have one announcement, just to keep everybody in, in the loop. Remember the MSBA zoning and a couple of towns fought the state? And the biggest one was Milton and they lost. So Milton, just the other night, did pass a bylaw. And so they, they returned to the fold. And I think it means like a little bit over 3,000 new units in Milton. So Milton, so I'm glad that Nellis didn't pick up that fight that they thought was a good fight. That's all.
Anybody else, any other announcements?
I was just gonna say thank you to the rec department for the carnival and the fireworks this weekend, which I think were a huge success. The fireworks went on for quite some time.
Yeah.
Know who saw them and who didn't, but yeah, they had a great night for it.
They were nice.
We had a great time.
Yes.
Did you?
Yes, we did.
And the weather from the most high held.
Yeah.
It did. It really did. Yes, they escaped that 104 degree, whatever the temperature it was earlier.
All right, excellent. So we will move on with our agenda here. The first thing we have is the Millis Day 2026 proposal.
Come on up, Allison. Speaking of rec sort of and fun in Nellis, it was a good segue.
So just introduce yourself and your address.
I'm Allison Rockwood, 89th Center Street in Nellis. I want to propose to a town a Nellis Community Day, uh, starting for September 2026. I spoke briefly with Karen and Mike, kind of getting an idea of what events are going to occur. And we're looking for sometime end of September, hopefully to follow the VSK run home. That's in Sunday. Still in a very early planning and ideas and so forth, but kind of taking some of the new vendors that are in town and all the small local businesses as well. And that was all for now.
Okay, so are you, are we looking for some kind of?
Well, so we've been talking about this for a while. People, you know, we used to do the Fireman's muster and there are different things and a lot of towns do, you know, Midway Day, Nellis Day. And so finally Allison came and said, hey, why don't you do this again? We said, great, you want to spearhead it for us? So what we need to do is put together some sort of a community, I mean, a committee.
Yeah.
Um, that can help her out. So she's willing to spearhead, but the Select Board will have to appoint a committee. But we thought first have her come in and say, are you even amenable to us doing this? And like you were saying, it wouldn't be this year, it would be for September 2020.
Too much to.
Yeah, I speak with Allison Marr and you did as well. So Allison Marr is the one that does the run back to school every year. So we thought, what a great day to piggyback off of the run back to school. I have had that be the kickoff event and then we'd have to block off an area downtown. Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, I got a question. Does it have to be a board appointed committee? I mean, I don't think the old one, the old, the old, whatever. I don't, I, in fact, I think there's a lot, this is nothing that is a, it's a great thing, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, no.
But it's not a public item. It's, it's for the public, but it's not a school renovation committee. It's not a enterprise committee. It's not a capital planning.
Yeah, to answer, yeah, to answer your question, I don't think it requires.
Right.
Okay.
That is, that is up to the board. If you are comfortable having a private group led by a person, just come and present ideas and, and after they, they meet for a period of time, that's an option.
Right.
Yeah, I would recommend that because it keeps you out of having to post your meetings, cancel meetings if you don't have a forum. Don't talk to three of them outside of the room, who might all be your friends.
Right, fair enough. And that's kind of my thought is really just to get your approval and sort of to move forward with this and the planning. And then we can establish this committee, but we don't have to be here. And then just to sort of get your, what you would like from us as we get closer to the event, what sort of approvals you might want or need or require. But I believe we would be sort of into the year by that.
Now, I already reached out to police and fire, obviously.
I have emailed Chief Fire and I asked him to port it to Chief Fire because they didn't have his contact information. I'm hoping to get together with them in the next couple of months, but.
So I don't know if you, have you been in town long?
Two years.
Okay, so it was probably more than two years ago, I want to say. Erin's gonna know what I'm talking about, though. It was, it was like the, the night owl, the police night owl.
I actually was a big part of that.
Oh, were you? Okay.
I was affiliated with Country Kitchen.
Okay.
Uh, I helped open them in 2019 and that was one of our first events here in town. So I became very friendly with, I believe, Clara from the police department.
Yep.
Spirit event. So I became friendly with her. I'm originally from Waukegan, started Waukegan Community Day as well as some other events.
Oh, good.
So kind of knew what we were getting into, but it was nice to do it smaller.
Yeah, that was a, that, it went off so well. I think, you know, if you combine some aspects of what happened there with like stuff on the town.
That was kind of our, our, you know, interest board is to kind of program off of that.
Okay.
But we get strictly a, you know, Nellis, then sort of just the national data.
Yeah, yeah, great. Yeah, I'm all for it. I think that's great. I think, you know, a lot of questions have come up like, why, we used to do this, why don't we do it anymore? And it's really been largely lack of volunteerism. So.
And that seems to be a thing in a lot of local towns. Things have dissolved because of that, but I'm hoping we can keep it simple and.
Yeah, rally all your friends. So you can get in there, have some wine and.
I know, but that could be a thing.
We'll be glad to give you a date when you come back.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Perfect. A little talk.
Thank you.
You have all her content. I do, and yes, she comes to the world of knowledge and other community planning, like she said. So she's a perfect person, I think, and what she's stepping.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. Next, we have a hearing for the fiscal year 26 water sewer and stormwater rates. Oh, wait, sorry. Nope, I lied.
We're five minutes.
We're five minutes early. We have to do it on time.
You can reappoint the board and committee members if you want. That could take two minutes.
Yeah, we could do that.
So if you want to, you don't need them to be here.
Or it's just a reappointment? You, that would be skipping to 25-139.
And so this is just your Select Board annual reappointment to boards and committees because sometimes board and committee members, their term expires on June 30th. It could be for three years, it could be for one year. It depends on the board and committee. So in your packet, you will find a very long list of who is currently serving and who is interested in being appointed again. You don't have to read everybody, I don't think. Just say, yes, you approve it as written and we can post it.
Have the, all the people that are being reappointed been contacted to see if they want to be reappointed?
Yes, and a few actually, we did get a few resignations by doing that. So we'll have a few more openings as time goes forward here.
Well, that was a mistake.
I know, right?
Sorry, I don't think we let them go.
And these are just, and again, these are just the Select Board appointed boards and committees. Obviously, there are other things, moderator points, financiality, yada yada. That's not on this list. And then your liaison appointments is later in the agenda. So this, you guys are not included on it.
Okay.
Still want to become a fence viewer.
Yes, you could be a fence viewer or.
It's a nice one. Hey.
Do you want to make a motion?
I see that, I just looked at Permanent Building Committee and there's not a problem, but Ellen's of being appointed as liaison to that. Doesn't that happen during our appointments?
Did she stay on there somehow?
She did.
Sometimes.
Only for that, then I missed that one.
Being that, but if we're doing our own list later, let's do them all at the same time.
Right.
And she should be, she should be the one, she's the one one.
Yeah. Take her off. You see anybody else? It's a liaison that I missed.
Saw that earlier.
Or remove her. Yeah, just take a quick look at this or.
What can you tell us? It's on page 281 or page 22. Get down to about page, keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going. Keep going.
Keep going.
Should say page number something. That's not trying to. Going. You go and just pass that. Yeah. Keep going.
Okay.
There you go. All right. Well, I don't see anything else that's wrong with it except that one.
Okay.
Feel like I'm tech support for Ellen that this time.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, I do probably, but I have to find out where that is on the list.
25-139.
Thank you. I moved the board, reappointed the individuals listed on the committee contact sheet dated 6/30/2025, with the exception of Ellen Rosenfeld to the Permanent Building Committee, uh, for the term date as shown.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can we set the date for the?
Yeah, you could talk about the fall town meeting date.
So for the fall town meeting date, we already talked about this a little bit at our last meeting. So looking at the motion that we have set forth, we need to figure out the election date.
Yeah.
Just looking at a calendar.
That's what I'm trying to call it too.
So didn't we set the town meeting date for November 10th?
Yeah, we talked about that. Yep.
We talked about that. We have to actually vote.
Yeah, you didn't formally vote it, but you did discuss it.
Yeah. We have to vote for the 10th and then would we want to do elections? Was there a reason we can't do elections on the 17th, like a week later?
There's a, a hall, there's a, a holiday in there, I think on the 11th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we wanted to leave time for early voting too.
Right.
So I thought we had discussed pushing it into this early, early December.
Either December 1st or December.
Oh, okay, we can do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that what we want to do?
I think we probably do, because we want to avoid Thanksgiving the last weekend.
And the 17th is too soon because of the early voting?
Yeah, you want to let early voting start. If you don't finish the town meeting on the 10th, 11th, the holidays, you don't get those days of early voting. 12, 13th, 14th, 15th, and then the elections. I think you want to give a full week of early voting. Because we don't have mail-in voting on this, just early voting first.
Right.
Aside from absentee ballots.
So why don't we say December 1st?
Yeah, I like that.
Well, look at that for just, I was thinking the 8th only because if you look at that, you got Thanksgiving, 26, 27, 28th, anybody out of town?
Oh, right.
If you're trying to accommodate.
You can talk to the town.
If you're trying to accommodate early voting in there, you're not going to get many days of early voting.
You can have people who are away for.
If you do the 8th, that gives you December 1st to the 6th for early voting.
Be careful that a whole month goes by between town meeting and the 8th? People will forget what they're voting on.
Don't think they're going to forget about a $70 million vote. I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to make sure we have enough time so that we're not cheating people out of early voting. Let's just walk into that. If we have a town meeting on the 10th, 11th is a holiday that gives you one, two, three, four days of early voting, 12, 13th, 14th and 15th, half day probably. If we go the 17th. So that would be voting, I'm, I'm, I've slept in the wrong month. I apologize. If we go the next week is 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, with the 26.7 and 28th being Thanksgiving. People aren't going to be around for that. So if you start early voting in earnest on the December 1st and have the election on December 8th, that gives everybody one solid week of early voting.
When is early, what's, is there a law? When does early voting?
It's not required by law. That would be, that's a local.
And if we don't want to put early voting in, then it changes the whole issue.
Why wouldn't we want to put it?
I, I, I think we would. I'm saying if we don't want to put early voting in, it changes the whole complexion.
Why don't we say December 8th then?
For the election with early voting starting December 1st.
Yes.
I think that makes sense.
No, there's another dumb question, Craig, which you'll tell me later. It is. Early voting doesn't get to start earlier than, well, you only get one week?
We could set it for the whole time from, but the problem is you got to.
Oh, you got to, you got to stay. Okay. Well, how much do we typically get for early voting, you know?
Well, on the state elections, I believe it's two weeks.
Two weeks.
But again, that's required on the state elections. It's not required for local elections. That's, that's a local option.
Yeah, I mean, we could even start it, I mean, if you wanted to, start it on the, what was it? First, start it on the 29th. It'd give you two Saturdays in there if you wanted to, but that would be, but that's coming right after Thanksgiving. Who's going to want to do that? Yeah. I think that works.
The 8th?
Yes. So we have a motion on 25-140?
I move the board, set the date of the fall annual town meeting on November 8th and the election on November 10th and the election on December 8th, with early voting starting on December 1st.
Second. It's been moved to the second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, now we're ready for the hearing. Yes.
Now you can, yeah.
So this is a hearing for fiscal year 26 water sewer and stormwater rates. Craig?
Yeah, I moved at the board, open the hearing to discuss and vote the 20, FY26 water sewer stormwater rates.
Second.
So moved in second to open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good evening. So with us tonight is Time Bond. They've been representing us for the past, let's say, fighting has been our rate increase, the water and sewer. They also represent us for our annual statistical report that should give you an overview of our annual audit of our water system. So they're doing that also for the past five, six years. This year, we actually contracted for a grant, not a grant, but funding from the budgets. And you approved that they would look at a five-year overview of the system. But tonight, we're here to just talk about FY26 increases for water sewer and stormwater. Some of them are extensive and, and we'll get into that discussion, but one has to still remember, there's a lot of infrastructure work that's still being done that, that included in this. The finance director, myself and Jen Skelton, treasurer collector, have met several times with Time Bond. This is the best that we've become. It was actually higher, believing about them, this, and they cut it down to where we are today. So let them introduce themselves and they're ready for their presentation.
Ben?
Thank you, members of the board. First, we would like to thank the town for putting your trust in Time Bond. And just would like to underscore, Time Bond is a 100-plus year old organization based in the state and we care deeply about water and wastewater towns in the state. So I just want to underscore that. My name is Hassan Doza and my colleague is Josh Bouchard. And we will discuss, as Jim mentioned, the water sewer and stormwater rate rates. Let me take a brief moment to guide you as to our.
Give me one minute. Just pull the microphone as close to you guys. It's supposed to be within like three or four inches from it. So don't come in here a lot, I say. Thank you.
We will begin with a brief overview as to how our rate analysis works and then we'll walk through the specific numbers for water sewer and stormwater. Our process begins by analyzing the town's budget, both revenues and expenses, customer usage data, and also capital investment projects to improve water quality for all three enterprises, water, sewer and stormwater. The key component in our analysis is to ensure the level of revenues is sufficient to cover both operating expenses, debt service obligations and your capital expenditures. And this is how we find out what is the optimal level of revenue that's necessary to meet these requirements. So let us walk through the numbers for the water enterprise.
Let me know if it doesn't pop up on the screen at all.
Okay, if you're logged in, you should be able to share. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, perfect.
Wonderful.
We will start with your intention on the expense side. If you can see the expense numbers for fiscal year 26, I will point your attention to the number 1.95 million. So one of the main drivers for the water base rate increase for this upcoming fiscal year 26 is the year-over-year increase in expenses. As you can see, we have, we are forecasting higher personnel expenses of by almost 16%. Higher operating and expenses from $600,000 to almost $700,000. And we are also planning a large transfer of reserves that's going up from $50,000 to $250,000. So all in all, the town is forecasting expenses going from 1.6 million to 1.95 million. And that's one of the major drivers of our rate increase. And I will explain to you how the math works. We did some optimization analyzing to make sure the town may be able to save some operating expenses from going up by that level. And we budgeted for that. But if you look at the numbers below, the most important number below is a number for the existing debt service. That's the town's water funds annual debt service. Of its debt of $670,000. If we simply add our operating expenses of 1.95 million, as I showed you before, plus the $600,000 plus, it leads to a total expenses of about 2.5 billion. The challenge is that if you look toward the top on the revenue line for fiscal year end 2025, our estimated fiscal year end revenue number of water fund is only 2.375 million. So the town, the water fund is essentially $200,000 short in terms of its upcoming expenses going into this upcoming fiscal year 26. So, and that's essentially the math. So we had to forecast a revenue increase of at least $200,000, which is 10% versus last year, to just make sure the revenues covers the increasing operating expenses for last year. And the last point we do is that, look, ultimately, your town has done phenomenal job in improving its water quality. And we want to make sure the water fund remains healthy. So we have to build in something we call some cash cushion. And that's at the end. If you look at the retained earnings line, all the way at the end, it's a green highlighted line. We made sure the water fund has some level of cash cushion, which we modeled at $235,000. And we also made sure that the fund has enough cash to cover its debt service payments. So it's the ratio that you see 1.2 times. It simply means that the town has enough cash for debt service to cover the debt service amount of $670,000. So if you account for the increasing in expenses and us leaving some cash cushion to the town, that's the driver for the 12% base rate increase we forecast for the water fund. I know it's a lot and we are very cognizant of affordability and we are very cognizant of what it means. So let me just pause here and give you the opportunity to ask questions because I do want to make sure we address it right now.
I have a question.
Of course, what can you do?
About that. The transfer to reserve to $230,000?
Yeah.
Is that to build the cash cushion? Is that, or is that going, what is that for?
That goes into a general reserve fund. So that's, that's, that's basically a cash outflow. Yes, that's, that's a reserve fund for the town that's going out of the water, water fund, enterprise fund.
But that looks like that's the biggest reason for the 12% increase.
Yeah.
When you're, you're literally taking it from one pocket, you're putting it into another. The town already has that, correct?
The town should have that money into an account separate from the water enterprise.
Okay, so we're taking $230,000 out of the water enterprise fund.
Correct.
And where are we moving that to?
Uh, the retained earnings?
Yeah.
Is that where it's?
It, it, it will go to a reserve fund that's under the town, a town reserve fund. That the money will be there, but it will be outside the water sewer and the stormwater funds. So that's, that's kind of the way.
Okay, then, but how do we spend that?
I'm still missing that a little bit. Is that money to reserve for water use in the future?
Yeah.
That how we get to the $235,000 retained earnings?
If you notice the, the 50 and 50 for FY24 and FY25. When the budget was done, the finance director, when we put that number in, don't forget, we have to pay for the contract.
Right.
The replacement meter at $198,000 something dollars. And we use those funds to, to fund that contract.
So there's going to be a replacement fund? Okay.
Either that or we leave it there and we borrow the remaining funds in the, that's left in the, that's still available for the well for one and two projects.
So that $230,000 is being moved out of the water fund into the general fund where we'll spend it on the capital projects that are needed for the water. Is that correct? The meters you mentioned. Yeah, one, yeah, the meters you mentioned. So it's really a water expense, just the way that it flows. It flows to the general fund and not directly out of the water.
Flow is significant.
But why? Why?
I'm not sure. I'm just trying to understand what's happening. I don't understand why it's happening.
Well, because if you don't move it out to pay for that, you're going to have to borrow it.
We, we would not, we'd have to even wait till town meeting.
Oh.
Or we would have to, for appropriations for that.
I see.
So this frees it up from here, puts it right out there where it can be spent.
We missed the, the May town meeting.
Yeah.
And it's a contract that cannot wait till the November 10th.
Tell me about that contract a little bit, please.
That's going for the replacement meter for the jackhole that's inside the, that was approved. You approved that contract.
Yeah.
And I told you, we had a, a way of paying for it without borrowing.
This is the way?
We're looking not to borrow, is the, if, and Jen can speak probably better to this. We've already bonded the well one and two project.
Right.
For us to re-borrow more money, that would set things into, I believe, a turmoil. Not a turmoil, but it's still available, but there's no need to do it if you have the funds here.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so this is basically paying for water related, it's a water related expense. We just have to move it out of this fund to pay the fund or pay it out of the general fund because that's what the bill will come in.
Right, but because.
Go avoid turmoil.
Right, which we don't like turmoil.
Turbulence.
But what, so in so doing, now we've created a little shortfall for our salary sum. And that's what we need to make up with this is the rates.
Great. But if we had gone with borrowing, it would be the same thing. Yeah. So it's just a function of the mechanic. It's not.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, it's just mechanics. All right, that, that's understandable a little bit more. Um, I have a question about. Uh, I had a question. Well, why debt service fall so much on the capital outlay line?
Yes, I, I, we had anticipated the question. So that, as you had been, as the town water had been investing in this PFAS treatment system.
Yes.
I've a town had to borrow short term debt. So what happened was that if this current fiscal year, there was a borrowing of short term debt and that short term debt is being now paid out. So that's why your short term debt expense is going down. So that was a one time increase for fiscal year twenty five. And Jen, again.
That, that is correct. Plus Jim got the, uh, four million dollar grant for the PFAS group. So that offset.
Perfect. Thank you. Understand that one now. Well, to complete the trifecta, existing capital outlay, why does that fall by so much?
Well, that's good news. So you guys, as I mentioned before.
I figured that was good news.
Always end with good news.
Yeah.
Always end with a good news. Your, your town has done tremendous job investing into improving your water quality. And above of those capital spending are behind us for fiscal year twenty four and twenty five. So going forward, our capital needs for the town's water fund are much lower. So that's, that's a positive and that's going forward. That should also alleviate, uh, you know, more need for cash. That's, that's a definitely a lower capex burden for this coming fiscal year.
So going back to the first question, um, next year FY twenty seven, uh, with everything we know now, not, there's obviously things that can change. That transferred to reserves, would that, is that an ongoing two hundred and thirty or is that a one time?
That's a one.
I mean, there'll be some transfers, but it won't be two hundred and thirty. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll look at it a lot.
I, I was going to say one comment. I'll make it now for all, all our, our capital improvements. If you notice, we've actually backed everything because of the expenses that, because of that twelve percent rate increase. It, it's not that it's a good sign that we're, we're not replacing a full meter replacement program, which could be four or five million dollars, um, replacing water mains. That, you know, one stretch of, you know, mainstream could be several million dollars. And that's not helping the entire water system, but to get things caught up, we need to slow the process or, or replace them and keep on going up borrowing. I mean, we could do it. I mean, and, you know, there, there's, there's things on that list that the D E P or, uh, especially the booster station that you've heard me talk about for years and years up on Walnut Street, uh, that we acquired the land for nothing, uh, and that, that's a big thing that they're, they're, they're on us about. So that, that could be in the next several years. And again, that, that's, you know, talking three hundred, four hundred thousand, talking millions, you know, to, to take the booster station out of the ground, put it above ground. And so we, we are pushing things off and, and it's not that it's, it's a good thing to do. But right at this time, putting the expenses of the two PFAS plants. And most importantly, I'm, you know, with the regulations coming out from the EPA, there's going to have to be another one. Uh, that's a talk related debt account.
And, 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 and FY twenty seven, when the two hundred and thirty goes back to a more reasonable number, that would free up money for capital expenditures.
I have a quick question. What's the matter with the thing in the ground that has to come out of the ground?
It's a confined space entry, um, and it's old. It's probably been there since, you know, the system was built. Uh, the pumps burn out, they get flooded. And when rain comes in, even although we try to keep it as sealed up as possible, you know, that manhole fills up with water and it's not good with have water and electricity at the same time.
No. It's not good to have water and electricity at the same.
Oh, we got it.
We have any other questions?
Not on that one, no.
If you were to, as my colleague Josh has been, you briefly go to on the sewer and the stormwater rates. Josh can go ahead.
Yeah, Josh, the easy ones, huh?
So comparing the sewer to water, you could already see that instead of a twelve percent number, we'll add two percent number. So to go quickly over what went into that, um, historically, the town is bringing in about one point seven to about one point eight million dollars of revenue per year. And on the other side, with coming out of the system, you guys are looking at about one point five, one point four billion dollars in expenditures per year. Um, with capital costs ranging from three hundred fifty thousand dollars now slowing down to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, your enterprise fund is at a really good level right now. Uh, your debt service ratio is in the perfect range. Your month's cash on hand is perfect. Uh, we're recommending a two percent rate increase just to keep up with inflation. So no planned capital projects or no big planned capital projects coming in the future. So no reason to go hog wild with that number. And moving on to stormwater, uh, very similar thing to sewer. Uh, you guys are bringing in about seven hundred thousand to about eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Um, coming out of the system, you've got about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditures. Uh, capital projects, very low. Uh, they're starting to ramp up in fiscal year twenty six. You can see historically, they've been about sixty five, fifty thousand dollars per year. Now they're going up to two hundred seventy seven thousand dollars per year. The town just recently completed an asset management plan for the water sewer and stormwater system. Within the stormwater system asset management plan, several projects were identified. So that's why that number is going up. Enterprise fund is in, again, very good condition. Uh, meeting debt service ratios, you have plenty of cash on hand. So to anticipate these capital projects that are going to be coming in twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, we're recommending a four percent rate increase for all of those. I know I went through that very quickly, but do we have any questions?
Craig is mapping the whole time.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, with the per unit cost of stormwater being ninety nine dollars per unit. Oh, that's coming up. Never mind. Sorry, I hate when people jump ahead. I was mapping. Okay. Continue.
And to summarize, and there we go. So you had the right idea. So to summarize, what we did last year, or what the town decided to do last year for water, there was a ten percent rate increase across the board for all base fees and all usage fees and this capital assessment charge. This year it's twelve percent. You can see all of the rates that are presented here. For the sewer, a five percent was passed last year. A two percent is being recommended for this year. Again, you can see the rates over here. And then for the stormwater, the the fee hasn't been changed in several years. So we're recommending going from thirty three dollars per year for a flat fee, all up to thirty four dollars and thirty two cents.
How do these things work?
Oh, nice. Well, I was looking at retained earnings. That's the thing is. Um, retained earnings in, uh, stormwater are not sufficient to cover the, uh, the capital projects of basically the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase in capital. Yeah, that would eat in retained earnings pretty hard.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, can you just switch the screen to the, I'm sorry, it's still, it's still on sewer.
Oh.
Sorry. Oh, that's okay.
Oh, I didn't, I never noticed that it wasn't showing at every, uh.
That's also, I was like, oh, you know what? Just for people who, if anybody's watching, if they watch the video, at least it will show it. Thank you.
So Jim, we're raising the stormwater.
Yes.
First time.
First time.
How many years?
Uh, six, six, two, two thousand.
Eighteen, six years, yeah.
Two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
About thirty two, something?
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, something that needs to be said about that is that's based on a building unit. So homes can have multiple building units going. It, it can add up.
Yeah, but, but a lot of the homes from the three.
Yeah, the thirty three, so take, take that thirty four, thirty two and times that by three. Because that's what the ninety nine dollar was.
Ninety nine, okay.
Yeah. All right.
You had a comment and knocked right out of me.
Give it a minute.
Does the board have any other questions?
I understand it. I mean, I'm, I'm a little disappointed with the twelve percent increase, but I understand it. You know, it's, and, and I'm thrilled to see sewer rates coming down because those are the expensive ones. I mean, that's coming down, but not growing at five percent, growing at two percent versus the five percent prior year.
I do remember my comment. If you, uh, if you go to the water and the capital assessment, I know this board, many members of this board don't like that capital assessment and neither do myself and, and Jen. Um, as part of our long range forecasters, we're going to see how, what the expense would be to build this into the, the regular rates.
Yeah.
And take that off of a quarterly building of seventy six, seventy. Because if you remember, when it was up, remember it was down, it went up.
Yeah.
And then it went down. Last year, now it's back up again.
Yeah.
Because it has to meet that rate. Um, we will talk further with Time Bond to see how that be rolled into everybody's water rate.
Yeah, and it, it needs, I, I personally believe it needs to be based on usage, just like everything else. So.
And that's part of the five year outlay of the block.
At Kitchener House.
Before I add for, um, audience comments, do you guys have anything else?
I think we're good.
You're good? Okay.
Yes.
Do, do we have anybody in the audience that wants to ask any questions or speak to the rates?
Couldn't resist that one.
I knew.
Kathy McGinnis, seventy, I don't know. I wonder if there's ever going to be some discussion about increasing revenue to the, um, water enterprise, that being the timing fees for new water meters. The, um, there are several towns that have six, seven, eight thousand dollars to enter. And Billis has had, or Mr. McKay, I'm sorry.
Two thousand?
Two thousand eighty six dollars. I think it's time that, um, people start looking at revenue enhancing for the bills for the, especially the water rate payers who, in all fairness, we have some of the best water in the Commonwealth as a result of, uh, there are towns that are looking to pay millions of dollars to tie into M W R A now because of the PFAS, you know all about that and in the towns out in the, um, north, mister, west. So, uh, there's no reason why sitting as the, um, committee that you heard couldn't think about increasing the water rates, especially with all the projects that are going on now that are coming up, you know, I wouldn't log a gag on it. I'd really put in effort and help out the water payers twelve percent. Would be, uh, you know, just something to think about, throw out there.
I think it'd be helpful to have that breakdown by surrounding towns.
Um, Tim, didn't you say we were going to look at that?
So as part of these rate increases, that, that those fees would, I know part of this, uh, part of that increase.
Right.
At this time, it doesn't mean that you cannot during the, the year, after looking at it, um, I, I, I don't have the exact number of how many we did tie in. So I mean, with the whole brother's gone, there's no way near that amount.
Yeah.
To actually do, put a good dent or damage.
Yeah, the ends of a lot of people.
Sign in that, uh, but to raise it to, you know, uh, you know, speaker spent six, eight thousand dollars, that could, that could rule out. To help.
No, I know, but I, I don't know how it, I know that the rates in all the neighboring towns, you know, because every builder I know is having a nervous breakdown, right? They're crazy.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I haven't researched that. Um, uh, we can.
I think it'd be worth finding out.
I don't like to be the highest.
Yep.
I don't like to be the lowest.
No.
There's, there's a sweet spot.
Jen knows one.
Second, fifth.
I, I just, I just want to add.
So at my sweet spot.
In your company to clarify, last year, the water tying fees for both water and sewer due to one five percent. You know, and Kathy's obviously saying that we need to look at comparing towns, which we can, but, but we did increase them last year. They're just not a part of this year's.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah, we can look at the comments for that and see what we can do. Thank you.
It's like Time Bond saved us money and Kleinville will come in and.
Need to close the hearing.
Wow, if there's anything.
Are there any other questions or comments from the audience?
I just wanted, um, the one comment I asked here after here. Sorry, Kathy McGinnis again. Um, can you tell me, I, I turned my phone off to find the calculator. What's the percentage increase in the indirect costs? Two and a half percent? Oh, that's, that's, thank you. That's pretty.
Just cast that two and a half percent. Yeah.
However, the indirect for one of them is, um, the stormwater indirect goes from ten to fifteen. That's a little more than two percent. The poor stormwater has never been picked on.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm.
That's all right. I just, I'm, I'm, thank you for that two and a half percent.
Okay, do you want us to close the hearing?
Yeah, um, I move that the board close the hearing to discuss and vote FY twenty six water sewer stormwater rates.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, I move that, uh, that the board adopt the proposed FY twenty six rates as follows. Water twelve percent increase, sewer two percent, stormwater four percent.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Okay, next up, we have some appointments.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, so very, some very exciting appointments this evening, um, starting with the town clerk. Um, as the board knows, upon the recent successful passage of the town meeting article and ballot question to change the position of town clerk from elected to acquainted, we began the process of advertising, uh, for this position. And based upon that search, um, decided to, I decided to appoint Kathy Smith, um, to the position. Um, as, again, as the board knows, Kathy has been the acting town clerk since last August. Um, when our, uh, elected town clerk resigned, Kathy's done an outstanding job, boldly stepping into this vitally important role and has since successfully guided the town through two elections and two town meetings. And prior to this period, Kathy served as the assistant town clerk and deputy town clerk with distinction for many years. It's well respected by her colleagues. Um, Kathy was overwhelmingly elected the town clerk at the, uh, town election last month. And she has extensive experience and has proven beyond any doubt that she is quite ready to take on the challenges of being the first appointed town clerk for the town of Milles. Therefore, I'm enthusiastically recommending that the board ratify my appointment of Kathy Smith as the town clerk.
Okay, I move that the board ratify the town administrator's appointment of Kathleen Smith, the town clerk effective seven, one, twenty, twenty five.
Before I second that, I just want to say that anybody I talk to that comes into town hall for any question or any aggravation or any whatever, their first stop is the town clerk's office. And no matter what answer they get, may not be the one they came in looking for. They are so impressed with the, the welcome, the help, the guidance, the time spent. It sets the tone for how they feel about this town. And it all comes from the town clerk's office. And I've got to say it, it doesn't matter who I talk, they don't know who I am. And it's universally known that this whole building is terrific. Starts with the town clerk's office. So I will second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Congratulations, Kathy.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, the next appointment, um, uh, we recently advertised internally for the position of assistant town clerk. Um, this because of the new makeup of the town clerk's office was a, uh, a, a new title, uh, within the department. Um, after, um, that process, um, I'd like to appoint Sue Vara. I believe she is the best applicant for this position. Sue's many years of experience working for the town, along with her knowledge of the operations of the town clerk's office. Make her a perfect fit for this important position. Sue has proven herself to be a team player and an expert in serving a diverse public. Um, and due to these reasons, I'm enthusiastically recommending the board ratify my appointment of Sue Vara at to the position of assistant town clerk for the town of Milles.
Hey, I enthusiastically move that the board ratify the town administrator's enthusiastic appointment of Susan Vara as assistant town clerk effective seven, one, twenty, twenty five.
So the same goes for Sue Vara. I don't want to leave her out because I'll hear about tomorrow. She is terrific. Uh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Yay, Sue, even though.
Uh, Miss Madam Chair, um, the next appointment, um, uh, due to the recent creation of the human resources department, um, we advertised internally. uh, due to the recent creation of the human resources department, um, we advertised internally for the new position of municipal HR generalist. Uh, we were very fortunate uh to have an outstanding candidate with the perfect combination of experience and skill to tackle this new position. Uh, Victoria Schindler, who the board knows very well, um, has worked um in the select board town administrator's office for almost three years. Um, and has served as the town's benefits coordinator and has performed extremely well in this position. Victoria has proven to be able, uh, willing to challenge herself with new types of work and greater responsibilities. She has superb people skills, and I'm quite confident that she will excel in this position. Um, due to the reasons stated, I'm I'm enthusiastically recommending that the board ratify my appointment, Victoria Schindler, to the new position of municipal HR generalist for the town of Mills.
All right, I move that the board ratify the town administrator's enthusiastic appointment of Victoria Schindler as yeah, as uh, um, municipal human resource generalist effective seven, one, twenty, twenty-five.
Victoria's been a terrific addition to this office, the way she fits in and personality, everything is terrific, so second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries unanimously. She's not in the wrong, but yay, Victoria.
Working hard.
Um, we do have a uh, another appointment, um, again, uh, this was for the uh Department of Public Works, um, and I will turn it over to the Director of Public Works. Our exciting new addition.
So this is uh very exciting, enthusiastically, uh. Um, this is the new hire that that was appropriated in the town meeting. Uh, one of our employees took the look that that position, and this opens up a position Tuesday through Saturday. Chad would have been here if I had told him that he was being appointed tonight, but I tried. Um, Chad is a Millis resident. Chad Hopman, um, he lives on, I don't know if it's exact address, but he lives on Plain Street. Um, he is a graduate of North Barkany. And he also has an environmental science degree from Westfield State. Most important thing, um during the interview process, town administrator, myself, and the major human superintendent. This was the first time we've actually had three very well qualified candidates. It was exciting to see that we had three candidates that we could have given it to any one of them. Chad stood out because the most important thing, he has a pesticide license. And if you all know, I didn't want that, we've we contracted, Craig, you probably did that. The two other contracts, we gave that as a stipend, and no one could ever, ever wind filled it, um. So Chad comes with that, and that's what put him to the top of the list, you know, the three candidates. Um, so what that means is he's going to be able to welcome right of management program to spraying ball fields, uh, we will, um also fertilizing our own town fields, so we don't have to outsource that any longer. Um, so that's a big input for us, that's that's a great resource for us. Um, Chad also served uh in 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 the research for eight years, it was a municipal, municipal police office, not a municipal police office, it was a uh, police officer.
Military police.
Military, yes. So town administrator's appointment, so I'll let him say.
Um, so uh, it was the board, I am asking that the board ratify my appointment of Chad Hopman as an uh heavy equipment operator laborer. Uh, pending a successful DOT physical in drug screen.
I move the board ratify the town administrator's appointment of Chad Hopman as HO, heavy equipment operator laborer pending a successful DOT physical in drugs.
Second.
Can I say anything nice, Al?
Well, I actually met him, I'm not going to be here. He's a very nice young man.
There you go.
But he has a pesticide license, so I don't care how high he is, he has a pesticide license.
Excellent hire.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
These are our appointments, so I'll make the appointment, I move the board appoint Wayne Harrelson as a member of the zoning board of appeals effective seven, one, forty, forty-five.
Second.
We've been on that position in the past forever, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And he stepped away and that was bad.
Yeah.
He missed it so much.
Yeah.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries unanimously.
And this is our appointment as well, I move that the board appoint Kathleen Smith, as Ellen spoke so fondly of earlier. As a member of the board of registers, effect, registrars effective seven, one, twenty, twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, and congratulations to everybody in the positions.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
We're actually all hanging in.
Starting.
So the next thing on the agenda is a discussion of a proposed development or request for sewer capacity allocation.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Doing great, how are you?
Good.
Um, I can present, I I have a couple of slides if you want to see them, sorry.
So if you log into Zoom, which is right here, it's gonna be the log into Zoom, you can share your screens, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Would you want to introduce yourself in the interim here?
This is Andrew Zoppo, representing the SSC Corporation.
They all know.
You look familiar.
You know? Dan Merrick, who played a scene.
All right, it's loading. Yeah, very quickly, thanks for your patience, appreciate your time.
Right, is the sun right in your eye, I thought the sun was right. So, don't push it.
You know, that's totally.
All right.
There you go. Good on a blind year, we're happy you're here.
I see the study, so. So they've uh, the Zopos came to us uh several months ago, while they themselves, the town administrator. Um, and they've been presented what they're want to do. Um, but uh, in many discussions and meetings with them, I told them that they should stop here about the sewer capacity for the development. Um, so after the discussion going tonight, I still haven't given them the sewer extension uh permit, Catholic, you know, that they will have to fill out if if deemed necessary, so we can save that conversation for later, but um there've been many times to event with us, with our bagels.
Oh, yeah. Goodbye nights.
I don't.
Goodbye, husband.
Nothing, we got nothing. We got nothing out of this.
Well, it's fifty now.
Well, yeah, she was very. All right, can you see my screen?
Yeah, yes.
All right, terrific. Um, thanks again, we're here to make our sewer allocation request for twelve eighty Main Street, and this has been a dormant parcel until now, so we think that this is an opportunity that could become a cornerstone neighborhood for the city of Milis. And I'll show you a few important slides and then get your feedback.
Town.
Town, sorry.
Excited. Okay, so the current site is an industrial property, it's contributing very little to the town and um in terms of financially or socially, it sits idle on Main Street, disconnected. Um, but it it is a large opportunity to connect with downtown and provide more walkability in a great neighborhood close to the center.
So if people, if people don't know where Dr. Reese's is, this is the bad farm, it's been there forever.
Cross your tractor supply, it's back behind the old railroad bed.
Yeah, thank you, it is, it is um back, you do have to drive through a driveway and and pass one of the uh into the woods a little bit, and there's a solar field back there as well. All right, so right now, um, this is the current view of the site, you can see that it's pretty sterile, um, both we brought in one of the best site designers in the country, possibly in the world, to help us configure something that would be unique to Milis and contribute a lot of value. And right now, obviously, there's no tax base and or very little tax and no civic function going on, and and we think this is an opportunity to change that. So we're not just building a bunch of housing, we're building an entire community in this section in this industrial um piece of land. And it's focused around connectivity, walkability, and providing much needed housing for the residents of Milis that are looking to downsize, for families that want to be first time home buyers, and other families that want to live in this type of community. So you can see on the right, there's a picture of the green space, this isn't a rendering, but it's the idea that we're thrusting on this project, we want to create this type of green space where everyone houses face the center and have the greens an opportunity to connect with their neighbors, walk around. So what the project is specifically, it's ninety-six homes, it's a mix between flats, condos, and single family houses. It'll support a hundred and seventy-six bedrooms, and it includes a much needed affordable component. And I mentioned the walkable design, but it's also near downtown, so it's a potential to link uh link with downtown and provide more walkability for the residents there as well. Um, and we're serious about this project, we've already invested sixty K in due diligence to move things along, um. But we see this project is not viable without sewer, we've checked every alternative, we've even looked into a packaged treatment plant. But there'd be massive land loss, excessive cost and critical delays, and it just wouldn't be viable, so. This is, this is stuck on idle until we can have uh a sewer allocation, and that would make this thing go forward, we're serious and we're ready. And we've brought Dan from Legacy Engineering to speak to the sewer component of this.
All right, I'm going to say things we've heard a lot over the last five or six years. So I'm just going to give you a recap, I provided a letter to you just so you have an understanding of the current condition of your sewer capacity and allocation and what this project would do to it. You have a total of allocation and the treatment plan of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons per day. Your two hundred and, your twenty twenty-three sewer policy basically set aside a five percent reserve capacity of an amount of flow for everyone who's paid a betterment, which was fifty odd thousand gallons per day. And then in twenty twenty-three, you assessed uh all approved projects and anticipated projects, and you indicated based on Title V flow rates that you had thirty-one thousand gallons per day of available capacity for connection. You updated that in twenty twenty-four, and the available capacity increased from thirty-one thousand to thirty-six thousand. That's because, as I think everybody knows, Title V flow rates are grossly inflated, and as the units come on for the projects that you've approved, the number that you're holding is never realized, because the actual average discharge is half of what you're carrying on the books. So.
Do you guys remember?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so this project, Title V flow rate, right, which is twice the average day flow rate would be nineteen thousand three hundred sixty gallons per day. So as of your twenty twenty-four update, you had thirty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-two gallons per day available. So you have capacity within your sewer policy clearly to accommodate this development. Um, if you look at more realistic flow rate projections, if you allow this project to connect, you'll still have at least seventy-five thousand gallons per day of capacity. So I want to kind of conclude with a pretty startling fact that I just discovered today. The whole thing, this whole thing started in twenty nineteen with a memo from your consultant. In that memo, GCG reported that your three-year average daily flow discharge to the district was three hundred ninety-seven thousand gallons per day, which is about sixty-two percent of what you're allowed to. In the twenty twenty-four update that you did last year, your three-year average flow discharge was three hundred ninety-eight thousand gallons per day. Less than one half of a percent increase over five years.
What was the number in twenty nineteen?
Three ninety-seven.
Three ninety-seven. And last year it was three ninety-eight, so five years of building, your actual discharge increased by a half a percent. So the long and the short of it, in my view, is that you have plenty of capacity for this project if it's something that you're inclined to do.
So when you say the, I don't remember offhand, the projects that we already obviously told brothers, it's built out hundred percent.
That's done, yeah.
Oh, so that's done, and then you've got Mark House project on the corner of Hammond?
That's included in the future projections.
Fescas included.
Yes.
Um.
Warner was in Butterbings, I was included.
Butterbings, of course, Herman Chew?
Yes.
Okay.
And they also added in
Which one?
In the twenty twenty-four reassessment, the developed capacity actually increased a lot more, but you added in as a future potential project, Stony.
Right, Stony Burke.
Nineteen thousand eight hundred gallons per day.
Okay.
And that's not.
Okay.
That's a come here.
Is there anything else that we know is coming that isn't in, that we know is coming?
No, none of them are.
Okay.
I mean, from discussions we've had previously about um capacity and what what we want to see come here in used capacity, it would be um you know, a a mixed um situation with affordable housing, um.
And this will be a
Common housing.
Permit, so it'll be twenty-five percent or
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent or forty-five percent.
Does this get us over the hump?
We're getting really, really, really close.
Really, really, really close, but we're never.
You're not even talking about forty B's in two or three years, is my projection.
Okay. So.
So we received Dan's letter Thursday night, and I was off Thursday and Friday, so I haven't really digested it all yet. Um, our our projections, though, sewer capacity on an average daily flow was much higher than what Dan just presented. We have it at like four hundred twenty-four, hundred, four hundred twenty-five thousand gallons on last year's flow rates. I think that what we need to do, and and just so we're on the record, and and I'm speaking truthfully, what we're doing, every time we 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 mortgage ourselves into these larger developments, you're kind of handicapping the future of of Mills residents that have the right to probably tie into sewer. And that's my opinion, I've stated that at the beginning, all all always on this, on this discussion. Um I I reviewed this policy, I think this is a great development, uh, we did talk right away, we spoke of uh the package treatment plan, uh, you know, even Norm's that's up there to say that, I'm sure we can get the select boys that you build it, we'll take it, or we'll own it, um, so on, so on. Um, most importantly, I think that we have to still look at the 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 town through the Charles River Pollution District, you know, we still have to send this, you know, I'm sure when we move forward tonight, we'll give, you know, the applicant a sewer extension permit, and they'll have to more formalize, you know, their design and and what their intentions are for that to move forward, I'll have to send that to the Charles River Pollution District, and they may not sign off on it, they probably won't, it's on the table, we're still at that capacity. Uh, but you still have the right to override whatever they do, um, and whether they penalize us uh or not. But the uh, the town of Mills right now is is on the verge of uh being forced to take a sewer permit from the Mast EP, just like the Charles River Pollution District have, they have all the different communities in their, in their um Franklin, uh Medway, Bellingham, and the town of Mills, we may have to have our own separate permit. Even though we're not, we're discharging to the Charles. In in what the the regulation states, it hasn't been approved, but it's going forward. Right now, we don't, we have the uh average daily flow of uh like a million gallons a day, when you have heavy rains and stuff like that, we usually, they they knocked off the 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 calculation for the yearly flow. Those would have to be calculated into the, to the yearly. Those would have to be calculated into the, to the yearly flow, the daily flow. So if we have a a a day of a million, which we, last year, I think we succeeded that three times. If you remember, last year, it was, it was probably the driest year we ever had, and then three or four times, we over went that million gallons three or four times. So in that time, we don't use that as the flow calculation. We will with this new permit, we will, and that so that that four twenty-four could be whatever um so like I said, I I really haven't looked at Dan's, just written down the the comment that he just made. I have to look at it. Uh, you know, myself and 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 Mr. Duffy, the only one that I've left in the enterprise committee, you know, we did a spreadsheet that I forwarded you um to take a look at, and it shows that four twenty-four, but um we really haven't gone through everything else there to make a formalized uh presentation.
Uh, just before Mr. Duffy gets up, just one thing I wanted to kind of mention or point out. Dan, you said it would be something like nineteen thousand gallons that they would need, right?
Title V flow rate is nineteen thousand three hundred and six.
Okay, and right now, under this list of permitted flows, there's a pending Stony Brook by nineteen thousand eight hundred, and they have not been before us yet.
They haven't been be, have they been?
No.
See you?
No.
So that is not even a thing yet, but that's nineteen thousand eight hundred gallons.
That we're reserving already, though.
But
Yeah.
But we don't need to be reserving it, but they haven't come to us.
Right, exactly. But even with that in there, as a reserve amount, it's still thirty-six.
Right, right. Okay, sorry.
No, that's, I was thinking the same thing. It was great off.
Um, Jim Duffy, three, four, three, exchange tree. Um, I don't know if there's some water sewer permission in working.
I know, we're terrible.
I I'm just here to state some facts based on data. You saw this spreadsheet that went out. I updated, I finally found where the reserved projects are. We have a, some calculation to fix on that, but in terms of historical daily flows from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five in reverse order, so projected twenty-twenty-five based on Q1, which honestly, this is historically seemingly a little higher than the rest of the years. Makes some, makes some sense, probably. Four hundred and nine thousand. Last year was four seventy-four, so
Actual?
Yeah, this is real data. Twenty-twenty-three was three ninety-one, twenty-twenty-two, three, three. Twenty-twenty-one was four twenty. So now I think the TBW has taken some medium flows out of the system, right, and right, all of them, so it's always gonna vary a little bit. Do that estimate, right? So from there, we calculated a three-year rolling average, but just taking those numbers. So a quick question to everybody, somewhere in a spreadsheet, we have this eighty percent number for our sewer flood, right? There's the five percent buffer, then somewhere an eighty percent target of not wanting to exceed eighty percent. Does anybody remember where that came from? Because I don't think I made it up, but I might.
No, we made it up.
I, I think after some thought and consideration, we thought it was a prudent number, and that was said.
Or did that come from Charles River?
No.
No, okay.
Alright, so the spreadsheet has that, and some terms I coined was permitted working capacity, which is really the ninety-five percent of right? And then I call it working capacity,
Yeah.
which is really eighty percent. Okay. So of the working capacity, the twenty-twenty-three through five, three-year rolling average is ninety-six percent of the working capacity. And it's seventy-nine percent of the permitted capacity. So plus or minus a couple percent here or there, just whatever, that's the data. Um, and that changes when you do three-year rolling. So of the reserved project that originally we had roughly ninety-seven thousand gallons, we did an estimate of about sixty percent of that's been online. So there's roughly now still forty thousand eight hundred and eighty gallons of preserved capacity.
That sounds, does that sound right?
Assuming you're talking about including projected projects.
No.
Or permitted projects, but not
Permit project, so the ones that are still in flight are eminence place, which is forty-five percent, I think, according to a letter I just saw. Um, Gateway at Villas, we targeted it at sixty-six percent, because two out of three buildings were built. Um, eleven seventy-eight Hammond and Main, zero percent, right? That's, and then uh Howell Noel is that.
That's, that's Tom No, no, that's one oh nine right on the street.
Thirteen forty-four Main, anyway.
Yeah.
Zero. So that's now
Yeah.
Pending, we could have a discussion of what the hell do we wanna do with pending, because if they're not approved, then you, you you might want to factor the right? We might wanna keep that number out there, and whether they are, what they're gonna make up, and it's kind of a race of who may get here first, but pending does apply to our capacity, potentially. Right, so you need to factor
Well, I don't mind.
In some way.
No, I mean, I, I agree with you. I don't mind pending, but I'm not gonna hold.
We're not gonna hold it, right?
Right. It's like, like Jim has said, it's first come, first served. I mean, that doesn't change.
But it's an important number to know what we may have left at some point in time, and if Project ABC doesn't use it, DEF is probably gonna, yeah, right? So from a future projection, sort of a number we want,
Yep.
how we use it, it's open for discussion.
Yep.
So, so that's essentially what it says. Now, calculating or now using the forty thousand gallons, our working capacity remaining is minus eight hundred, eight thousand four hundred and sixty-one. Now, obviously, the forty thousand is gonna translate to, call it half of the twenty thousand, so that's gonna give us what the eight, minus eight plus, what did I just say, twenty? It's gonna give us twelve thousand gallons, right? Um, and when those reserved one project come online, we're gonna gather around forty, call it half, we're gonna gather thousand. So that's against the working capacity of roughly seven, so we're margin. When the future gets here, we'll be, we'll be fine, right? But so, but that's the data. I'm not here to dispute any, anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, I think when we put this together, we've realized there'd be a time when we run out of capacity. It's just a question of what are the projects we wanna do until we get to that time. And um, and do we dispute the thirty-six thousand uh gallons, whatever, uh uh, the thirty-six uh GPD is available right now? Is that uh not disputed?
Um.
That is, that's, that's including the pending on Ellen project.
Well, maybe against
Stony Brook.
I, I, I don't have that calculation for that. We'll get it that way. Maybe against the ninety-five percent capacity, that might be accurate. Against our working capacity of eighty percent, I don't think that's accurate.
Right.
Now, we may elect to say we're gonna go to ninety percent working capacity instead of eighty. I don't have those numbers. It's not coming. I can, I'll get you that, right?
But that's not real either, right? Like we just
Eighty percent's not real.
We just kind of came up with that.
Well, it makes some sense, because when you get there, you gotta then have time to go figure out what you're gonna do.
That was when it was time to read.
And still, and still, uh
Agreed.
Some, some product.
The thing that we can't lose sight of, uh, how much are we paying? How many gallons we paying for?
Six hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons per day.
Okay, so we are paying, whether we use one gallon.
Yes.
We are paying for the six hundred and
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand gallons a day.
Yep.
So the closer we get to six hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons being paid for, the better.
Right.
In that respect, however, the impact of potential future growth, tax revenues, all these things people like would be here.
Yeah, I think though, again, you know, when we talked about this before, we talked about what what projects would be flow-worthy, so to speak. And and this qualifies for one of the ones we were talking about. Now, as Craig said, at some point, we are going to run out of capacity unless somehow we obtain other capacity.
Yes.
And in that case, the project would have to have a package treatment plant if it was going to move forward.
Or we'd require additional
Or we'd have to acquire, but at that point, we're not there yet, and we do have some capacity, and it is a mix with affordable housing, which is out of all the checklist, so um.
And this number also that we have available takes into account a pending project we've never heard of yet, for Stony Brook for the same amount, so we just struck that from the list, not saying we should, but if if that didn't exist, we would be in a much better place too.
Yes.
Until they come before us, it doesn't really exist.
Well, maybe you're so prompt them to come before us.
Yeah, I would if I was them. I'd get here quickly.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
So easy for them, so I know what that was. There's no land down there, no room for the package, like, no room whatsoever. There's no, you, you can tell them this is on.
There's no room.
All that land back there, there's no room.
So, Mr. We looked into this, um, we did.
Because the reason I ask is we just paved one oh nine, so we're gonna have to rip up beautiful one oh nine, Italian sewer, you gotta develop.
No.
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 No. I know.
I can answer.
I'm sorry.
So, so we're actually in discussion with, with them, you know, there are other ways to get sewer, if if off the farm street.
Oh, okay.
Not that that's been decided or anything of of that. So I have to say, I'm probably a little more encouraged with this meeting than I have been in previous, because I heard first come, first served. So, you know, it it I I'm glad to hear that, because there are many things on that project list that people have been holding on to that number for many multiple years, and I'd like to see that, you know, we have a, if we have a developer here that wants to move forward within this timeframe of next year, I gladly give them the sewer extension permit, and I'll fight to get there, there, there uh through the Charles River Pollution District, because there are other developments that have been sitting there for a year after year after year after year, and we've gone to no place with them.
Right.
And they think it's gonna be there for us?
And if, and if it knocks them off.
Good.
Well, and that was the other part of the discussion, now that I can remember back however many years ago. Takes a minute to get there, but I'm there now. Yeah, um. We said that one of the criteria was we need to reevaluate these projects at some point, that permit is not in perpetuity.
Three years?
So, so I would be more than open to reconsider anybody who's over two years that hasn't made any progress at all. And that doesn't mean we're gonna cancel them, and it doesn't mean we're gonna close them out, but I think that it's important to say that, because if I'm sitting on some of these larger projects that have capacity, that haven't paid a betterment.
Since two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Some of them have been there, and they haven't done
Right.
Pretty much anything.
Right. So let's, that's another
Yeah, but
List together for our next meeting.
Yes, but they're all, I don't wanna use the word legal, but they're all still
Well, they're, they're legal, but you have the right, you still have the right to pull the permit, because every one of them's been two years old, gone past their expiration.
No, but hasn't COVID extended that?
No, that's wrong.
Yeah, I would say that we don't have, I don't wanna make a blanket statement, they're gonna pull all the
Yeah.
On a, one of the
Well, Union Street, but Union Street is is another one that, you know, we've litigated, or we've gone through much discussions with them. We've, we've come to a
We talked about permit shoe.
Permit shoe.
That's a special case. That's a little different.
But we've worked through that. We haven't heard nothing from them. They were going
I would be eager to have a conversation with anybody who has a permit over X number of years.
Yeah.
I don't think two's the right number, but I don't think five's the right number.
Yeah.
There's some number in there that makes sense, and that doesn't mean we're gonna cancel their permit, but I need to hear I need, I need, I think we need to vote to extend their permit or not, and that puts a little bit of impetus on
I'm trying to get to the planning board to do, most of the, but most of these projects don't go through the planning board. Most of them are going through
That's right.
So what do you think?
Right, but if we sit on the water, the sewer
Yeah, you can do that, I say you can do that.
Yeah.
So I have a question, um. So this is, this is a discussion that says no motion needed.
No.
If we're going to approve, shouldn't we have approved something?
So I guess what I'm, I I, why I asked to have this meeting, I asked them to come, was that you allow me to give him
Yes.
This, this paper to fuck, because again, like you just said, it's a sixty K that he's
Yeah.
Filled out. This isn't cheap. There, there, there's a, a, not a ton of money, but there's a, 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 a fee associated with filling out this, this um
Dan, what are you, are you asking for anything?
So they're in a due diligence period. They have to make a decision.
This is a due diligence period to purchase the property, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay.
And they need to know the answer to this question if they're gonna proceed.
And what's the question?
Will you allow them to connect?
So until you actually get this back, so completely filled out by, in your next meeting, we will review the process, and we'll get the approval of that.
So the board can make a determination at your next meeting on July twenty-first.
So not, not the money, the waters, but
Mad money.
This is a forty B. All local approvals go through the zoning board.
I know.
So
Water so.
Right.
I don't believe that's correct. All local approvals go through the zoning board, so they wanna do this as a lip.
But, but the, the Water and Sewer Commissioners have to approve releasing water or sewer.
Capacity, that's not true.
Zoning doesn't have that authority.
Right.
They can be okay with it, but I don't know.
And you can set the fees, you can set the fees uh 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 of everything, just like everything else. The only one that I've ever been part in a process that somebody actually came was when he asked for the um relief on the forty, you know, the actual low-income ones of the forty B's uh for a, a, a discount. I, I believe that, that you have the right, if the sewer sewer is not available, you have the right to say that it's not available, and then if they choose not to believe that, then they have legal rights.
Yeah, they can, they can appeal to the state if if they feel that.
I don't think we're getting that, I'm telling you, and I, I don't want anybody to get that impression that I'm saying.
Oh, but I like
I'm happy to give them the application.
Yeah, I think that we need to go with the official application process, and I don't think there's any reason that uh Stony Brook can beat you in, but they're already factored in on the list, so there's not
But they're not.
They're not.
They're not.
Yeah.
Stony Brook, they haven't filled one of these
No, no, but they're factored in on our capacity list.
No, they, yeah, but they're really not.
I know, but they show up on our list, and we talk about our numbers, we're talking about that.
Right.
Yeah, let's pretend it's not there.
Other than that adds twenty thousand.
They're not in my list.
No, no, they're not.
Okay.
Um, I think Jim just talked about them, because they
Then we have more, then we do have enough capacity, yeah.
He disappeared.
Yeah. He just disappears.
Then we have enough capacity, so
Yes.
I would say fill it up.
So I would say, yes, I would agree that let's give them the application and move forward.
I don't know, I don't know why I can't wait that long, which is the problem.
So July twenty-first?
Due diligence comes up.
July fourteenth.
July fourteenth.
To July nine.
Well, you do, the board has a special meeting, um
On the ninth.
It was originally just for year-end transfers. You could put it up on the ninth.
Yeah.
On your year-end.
We just have to be hearing stuff? We have to notify people or no?
I think this is a hearing.
I don't, I don't either. I just don't know.
No, no, it's just a, it's a hearing.
No, I, I hear it, sure. So you could, you could legally add it to the ninth if you wanted to.
So let's do that.
Alright, I'm willing to put it on the ninth, just to be clear, I, that's a, that's a workday for me, and I have stuff I have to do.
Yes.
I, I
Very quick.
Precise.
The meeting would have been a five-minute meeting, maybe now it would be
Or now it'll be a seventh in the
Make it seven.
I, I booked twenty, so that's fine.
It's the ninth at one.
There's always the chit chat.
Thank you for the consideration.
Is that on
Add that on the night.
Oh, we just, what, what's up, Jim?
Yeah, 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 it came up, I was gonna, we talked about permit times to take action. And I think we need to solidify that, more formalize that of
And call people on it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, oh, exactly, yeah.
So, so two things, because I don't know if that's in writing, or whether we've ever told anybody, or, you know, what's the you know, is it open-ended, or is in fact, are permits that we've issued, say, you've got
Listen.
Three years.
We have to, we would have to meet with the planning and whatever and see. I believe that every permit that's out there is in good standing. That's my belief. So until I, what?
Yeah, that's right. So going forward, you can impose time limitations.
Yes, but any
That's defined good
Historically, you did not.
Just means, you know.
They're within their timeframe to begin construction. They haven't done, just because we don't see anything being done, doesn't mean that their time has lapsed. Now, again, I, we're not gonna come in here after the fact and go back and undo somebody's permit with some vague, we think it's been too long, but we talked about moving forward.
Yeah.
Putting in time.
Give us a project, a process plan that says, here's where we open.
I know, but I'm saying, Jim, I know you don't think that
No, it's in the Bible.
I don't, you don't think that COVID extended, but COVID extended I know, but I'm saying, Jim, I know you don't think that, oh, it's in the Bible. I don't you don't think that COVID extended, but COVID extended permits.
But that's still an extension. If it's in the bylaw, then if you get whatever that is.
Yeah. I don't know about that.
So it's in the bylaw.
You can find out.
We can find that out. That's an admirable question.
Like we can pull everyone, take a look and see where we are.
Yeah.
One 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 quick point today.
And you are.
There, we're talking about permits. And I'm sorry, block waste and economic development planning.
First Bob.
And so we're talking about permits and we're talking about building permits. But we're also talking about the uh uh the permit from the state. Right? And the permit from the state is the ones are the ones that received the. A little bit of the. You know, slack from the state because of COVID. And those can be extended. The one at ninety, the one at one fourteen Union Street. They are more or less extended.
Okay.
Okay, now both uh uh eleven seventy eight Maine and one fourteen Union Street have their um their permit from the state. Neither one of them has building permit here.
Okay.
So I don't know how that works if they have a state permit, a comprehensive permit. And but they don't have the building permit, and I don't know how that uh. Uh, how that affects the status of the project.
It would seem to me that the state permit would rule. If it's been extended, when you said one one, is that Park House, the twenty five?
Yeah, um. Mark House is at eleven uh seventy eight.
I mean.
So yeah, it's forty eight units. And one fourteen.
Do you know about this group?
Sure, yeah, because.
Okay, is it?
The way the forty B works is.
Explain it to us.
You apply to the state for a letter of site eligibility first. It takes several months, then you do a whole design. You submit it to the zoning board. They go through a whole review process. They issue the comprehensive permit. That's not a final plan. It's an almost final plan, but it's not a final plan. There's one more step in the process, which is the applicant then has to finalize their plans. Get it approved by the state. Get the zoning board to approve the final set of plans, and then you go to building permit. So it's a it's a lengthy process. So. Eleven seventy eight has gotten the comprehensive permit approval from the zoning board of appeal, but now they're moving on to that third and final step of finalizing their plans for building permit application for approval by the state.
Okay, so they are moving.
Absolutely.
We just don't see it.
Correct.
Okay, and what about um Tresca?
Tresca had subtitle questions. They have been resolved. They, we are designing the project, including your new pump station.
Yeah, and I think all I'm looking for is that update, that type of an update. Yeah.
He has every project in town.
Yeah, well, let's do it on a formal period update at all. From yeah, not on the night.
Okay.
Alright, so at this point.
That'll be our research.
Right, so at this point, where we're sitting here is you guys have the permit. You will fill it out and do what you do, and then on the ninth, we will discuss and approve that.
Or not.
Or not, but hopefully approve that, and then you should be good to go. Is everybody on the same page?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, great time.
The meeting on the ninth is via Zoom only. It is at one o'clock in the afternoon, or is it one?
Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, I have a.
That day for work.
Yes. Yes. It's at one P M via Zoom, just so you know, it's a quick meeting. Zoom only.
I'm just asking people to pay my meeting, that's.
You can take that with you on the phone.
I know, I'm planning to.
Zoomed in on a entity meeting.
Okay, that cabinet is really is on a page.
Well, that that was a good tie-in, Craig, because that's what's next on our list.
Yeah, I saw that.
Board committee lia liaison updates and then reassignment of liaison roles for twenty twenty.
Sounds great.
I'm not sure what I had in.
I know. Do you have our list, Karen?
I have the list of, yeah, I gave.
Oh, I wrote them all down.
Yeah, because you're you've gotta win this. I understand.
I don't have to win it, I just.
You will win it. What was the last meeting? Up or back, right?
I don't have anything.
Oh, Lord. Sticky. Alright, here we go. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, let's look at all the ones I have. You're on half of them, so eleven.
Good.
So liaisons, liaisons. On June eleventh. Uh, Craig and I attended the school building committee. Right?
Yes, we did.
And economic development? You didn't go to that?
I went to economic, they had pizza, of course.
Oh, right, pizza, economic development, and this, and I went to the sewer meeting.
Yeah, I took the vacation day to that one.
So the school building committee was uh. That was a great meeting.
That was.
We already discussed it.
Yeah.
With the change to the gym.
Yep.
And then on the thirteenth. We attended the active shooter. Does that count?
No.
No.
Okay.
That just means.
And then on the eighteenth, there was another.
Or have you accepted?
There was another um school building committee.
Yeah. Well, that was in person.
That was the in-person one. That was fun.
Love it.
And then on the twenty fourth, I attended the energy committee. I was shopping at the mall and having dinner with my niece, but I listened to every word. I did. And on the tw- no, they're doing the um on the energy committee, they're. The two women made a presentation and they're uh continuing with the getting to net zero in twenty fifty.
Yeah, good.
God love them. And on the twenty sixth, we had the economic development committee.
I missed that one.
Which was. Why didn't I go to that?
Because I missed that. Oh, they had the the guidebook.
That was last week.
Oh, the guidebook.
Guidebook for construction.
So there, yeah, two pieces. I left before the second piece. So we're developing a guidebook. For anybody that wants to come to Millis, whether they're a developer. Or somebody that just moved into town and wants to open up a little attorney's office or a yarn shop in their basement. It's a book that tells you. Every step where to go with um, it's it's gonna be terrific. You gotta go to zoning if you need this, this is one of those, and if you need this, follow this. If you need this, follow this. It's gonna be. I think it's gonna be terrific.
Yeah.
Um, so that was fun.
Yeah. I attended the one she said I attended.
Okay, great. And I didn't attend any. I was on vacation. Um, alright, um, so our reassignment of liaison roles for fiscal year twenty six. So I don't know if you guys are all looking at the same page I'm looking at, but um. I guess I first wanted to say um. I. Do you, do either of you have a very strong desire for a particular committee?
Having missed all the opportunities for the cemetery committee, and you make it sound so wonderful, it's not a strong desire, but if you're. If you're willing, I'd I'd be interested in it.
Okay.
Scared to take it away from you.
I can I can I can relinquish.
And I can give you the Norfolk Advisory Board where we.
Nobody.
Nobody goes.
Nobody is doing the Norfolk and not.
It's just, we get one eighth of a vote.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
They fight.
Yeah.
It's it's.
But they do have manual meetings at the bar.
Sorry, I well, I'll I'll have to look into that anyway and see when their meetings are. I don't get any, do you get emails when their meetings are?
I do.
Can you somebody forward?
I delete them.
I I have to actually send whoever is going to be on it to them.
Just send me, I guess.
Notify them, yeah.
And and if you wanna keep the cemetery, I'm fine, but I thought it'd be.
Yeah, no, you can have a turn.
Okay, I'll just take one year on it, then I'll get off. I'll let you have it back. Oh, if you if you run again, you know.
Right.
I, as much as I made fun of them, I like the energy committee.
Alright.
Really do. We we have fun.
I like capital planning and economic development, and you get to be a voting member on the economic development term.
Okay. So.
Out of your mind.
Alright, so Craig, you would stay on capital planning, economic development and cemetery?
Unless somebody else wants either of those other two.
No, okay, no, I'm fine.
Okay.
And then Ellen.
I like permanent building, because I'm doing the school building and it's right after it.
Yeah. So you're do.
And energy, energy and the cable, you took it away from me, because I don't get along.
Oh.
No.
You might wanna stay on it just to wrap it up.
I'll stay on it, but it is.
I can take it if.
I think.
He's gonna be, he's gonna be at your next meeting.
Is he?
Because we're planning on wrapping this up, yes.
No, I'll take it.